All right, it's six thirty. I'm gonna call a meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education to order. Today is Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, and we are hanging out by Google tonight again. I have called the order or call the roll, Katie.
Ms. Garrison, Mr. Mary.
Here.
Ms. Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Pinker?
Here.
Ms. Bijak?
Here.
Mr. Lebrun?
Here.
Mr. Zach?
Present, board has a quorum. Heather will join us in a little bit. Her five-year-old is having a five-year-old birthday party today. So she said she would join in about six forty-five or seven o'clock. We talked about that earlier. I verified with all the board members that they can hear me and we can hear them. All the board members have received the materials relevant to the meeting tonight, and the minutes would reflect that. I have seen proof that the meeting's been appropriately noticed under open Wisconsin Open Meetings law. Tonight's agenda includes as an action item recommendation to approve the two thousand and twenty twenty-one preliminary budget in anticipation of our annual meeting in two weeks for the adoption of the levy by the electorate, committee reports, and then informational items about the opening of school and the annual meeting, and then discussion of future agenda. So we have a fairly short agenda in terms of number of items on it. And then we will hold a closed session at the conclusion of this, which the board would not return from open session. We're gonna once again try to talk about Dr. Bergstrom's evaluation process, which we've deferred just because of the length of other meetings. That's the agenda as posted. I need a notice of approval of that to proceed.
I'll move approval. Krista.
I'll second that. This is Anna.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would you call the roll, Katie?
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Pinker?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, we will proceed with the agenda posted and as approved. Item number one is approval of consent agenda. Items does any board, does any board member have any item that they would like removed? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar.
This is Tim. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
This is Anna. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the second. I would note that there are three donations for approval tonight. Brooklyn Area Chamber of Commerce is a hundred dollar donation for the Brooklyn PTO school supplies. Oregon Preschool Inc., OPI, has donated four hundred dollars to the Oregon Brooklyn Splash Pad, and there was an anonymous donation in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars for Stuff the Bus. And so we thank all those folks for their donations and their support to the Oregon School District. With that, we have a motion and a second to approve the items on the consent calendar. Katie, call the roll.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Pinker?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, motion on this consent calendar agenda approved unanimously. Information items, number one is comments received from the public regarding the agenda items. We have a couple of letters to board members, but first, Katie, do you have anything?
I have not received anything.
Okay, Tim, you received a communication from the public that they wanted to have read in lieu of an in-person appearance, so.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. I received a letter over the weekend from one of our parents down in Brooklyn, Nicole Holton. And I don't get a ton of letters, and so I think it's important that especially at a time like this, when it's hard for our community members to join us, that we hear from them. And so I'd like to read this brief letter. I'll try to keep it brief, but it will take a couple of minutes. "I'm a mother of three, a fourth, a sixth, and an eighth grader living in the Oregon School District with strong concerns about their education. First, I want to thank you for your time invested for our school board, our beautiful schools, our phenomenal teachers, and the education of our knowledge-hungry children. In no way am I making light of the pandemic that we're dealing with across the world, but I do agree with the cliche statement of the cure may be worse than the disease. I mean, I had an interesting summer in that my mother passed away from breast cancer in Tucson. I made multiple trips to see her and clean out her home through the summer via commercial flights. I noticed how numbers around COVID- nineteen in Arizona were significantly higher than back home in Wisconsin, and they were still offering five-day-a-week in-person education to all their students in public schools beginning August tenth. My mother was a huge proponent of education, and I am advocating for my children's education. I think everyone will agree that education in the spring was the best that it could be based on the circumstances, but it has not been as good, but it has not, I'm sorry, but it was not as good as what our kids needs for the fall. I'm grateful for how lucky we are to have all the Chromebooks in our district to help our kids continue to learn. Although we've been in school, although we've only been in school for a week, I have strong concerns about what's ahead for our kids with virtual learning, as I do not have any inclination as to when my older kids will return to in-person education. I watched my eighth-grade son's frustration grow as he was disconnected three times from his first virtual classroom on Tuesday. He was supposed to be editing a page on his teacher's slideshow but was not given editing permission. He spent ten minutes on his own trying to figure out before, before asking for my help and then notifying his teacher. The mic on and mic off is delayed, so I watched his class for twenty minutes while each student gave an intro about themselves, with everyone staring at their computers for thirty seconds until the next mic turned on. I watched classmates eating their breakfast, hugging their pets, putting on costume hats, et cetera, all of which is fun and entertaining and is great for socialization for the kids since they haven't seen each other all summer. But it will certainly be distracting if you're supposed to be listening to a teacher to learn new concepts. I also noticed how he has a hundred and forty minutes per week of SEL and seventy minutes per week of math. With ever-increasing challenges of grades and test scores to get into college, how will our children compare neighboring counties, compare with neighboring counties who are in person for their education or the private schools within our county who are now allowed to go in person? I'm also confused about the Wednesday schedule. Obviously, we don't need deep cleaning since they're not in school and campus staff use the afternoons for their time to create lessons. It appears to me that OMS has academic class until noon, and then they have study halls, orchestra band, and choir in the afternoon. I also know that we're quote, "starting slow to go fast," quote, but what kind of expectations can we have and should we have for their education this fall, this semester, or this year, depending on when they will be able to return to a new normal? I understand that in-person education is not for everyone. It's giving the choice to parents to choose what's best for their children and family that I'm interested in. Our daughter, who is in fourth grade, is very social and was most depressed by the situation in the spring. After Oregon announced that they were starting all virtual, we immediately opened and enrolled her by her own choice to the Evansville School District so that we could go to in-person school, which has been the best for her health, happiness, and education. The last month, the last month, she has been the happiest she's been since March, and even though she knew no one in her class, have never been in the school and knew none of her teachers. Living in Brooklyn is difficult. It's difficult to understand how, as close as eight miles south, schools are open for in-person education for all grades. But eight miles north in my district, all schools are closed. After School Club and Karate America were open all summer, following strict protocols to keep everyone healthy and safe, and they did a wonderful job. I'm certain that the members of our school board and the Oregon School District staff can figure out a way to educate our children and keep them healthy, both physically and mentally. Thank you for your time. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. And Anna, you got a similar letter from Nicole?
Yes, I did. I got an email this morning that I'd like to share. It provides a just a little bit more, a little different perspective than the note that she shared with Tim. So I appreciate giving me the opportunity to share her comments as well. And so Nikki says she would like to share her opinion on virtual versus in-person school with me as a school board member, and I'm sharing with the rest of the school board this evening. Unfortunately, this virus is not going away, so we need to figure out how to live with it within our communities. Our lives have been changed forever. This is similar to a nine eleven event for us. So we can choose to continue to live, work, and educate our kids in our homes, or we can decide to live our lives in the new normal. I understand when the virus first came, we didn't know much about it, and we had to protect our population by being safe within our homes. Now it's been here for six months, and we have been very intelligent, and we have very intelligent people tracking it, studying it, and treating it throughout our nation. We know so much more now than we did six months ago. What are we waiting for to get our kids back in school? Are we waiting for a vaccine? Are we waiting for herd immunity? Are we waiting for more suicides? I don't mean to be dramatic, but I'm trying to understand how we get our kids back in school. At what point does it become crucial? If we're waiting for a vaccine, will it be mandatory for our kids to have a vaccine before returning to in-person learning? If we're waiting for herd immunity, shouldn't we all be trying to get infected? Or should we have a systematic approach to getting infected? I'm sure we're not waiting for more suicides. The important facts are, and then she has a bullet point list, the virus is not going away. Our kids need education, and they grow up in a blink of an eye, so time is of the essence. Virtual education is not as good as in-person. Schools across the world, our country, and in our backyard are back in-person in smart, safe ways. ASC, Karate America, and others had safe summers with groups of kids indoors. Oregon is a phenomenal district with intelligent educators, administrators, and staff. I'm certain we can figure out a way to allow for safe in-person learning. There will always be families that do not feel comfortable with in-person, and virtual should always be an option. Many parents in Oregon understand the virus, and even so, have chosen to travel outside of Dane County for entertainment, sports, vacation, and dining. Do we have to travel outside of Dane County to educate our children? In the survey, two-thirds of Oregon families asked for in-person learning as an option. Parents like choices. They like to choose what's best for their children. And then she shared the letter, the same letter that she had written to Tim in the email. And that's the end.
Thank you. And I had correspondence exchanged with Ms. Holton this afternoon that was really good. I thanked her for expressing her viewpoints to the district and that we would share them tonight, and indicated to her that we've had really good communication with the public on this issue and that there are all sorts of views on what the best path would be, but almost all the correspondents that we've got have been respectful and kind, including hers, even though she disagrees with the path that we've chosen initially with that. And her response back, "We're in this together. Thank you for listening." So I thought that was really good exchange and thought it was important that we hear her point of view this evening as well. We've also had some correspondence from Jim Schleem, I think Schleem or Schline, and he's been writing Dr. Bergstrom and I think copying the rest of the board. And then he has an important viewpoint that I think also need to be put before the public and shared. Let me get to it. "I listened to Dr. Bergstrom participate in a Facebook Live call last week hosted by the Oregon Area Progressives. At that time, Dane County Emergency Order Number Nine was still in effect. I was disappointed to hear Doctor Bergstrom state during the call that if the order was suspended, that she would most likely still follow the recommendations of the public health of Dane County. Can't understand why she would blindly accept these recommendations without first understanding the science and evaluating the risk to students and staff. I keep hearing that teachers and administrators want students back as soon as possible, but frankly, I'm not seeing any concerted effort by leadership at Oregon School District to take back this, to back this up. If you look at the data supplied and updated daily by Public Health, there have been three deaths in all of Dane County of people under sixty years of age. That equates to a mortality rate of point zero forty-five percent, which is many times less than the seasonal flu. To put this in perspective, more people under the age of sixty have been murdered in Dane County in two thousand and twenty than have died from COVID- nineteen. Other data taken directly from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services website that there are approximately eight active cases of COVID- nineteen in Oregon, Wisconsin. Given this information, why are schools not open now for all grades or at least offering the option for parents that want it? Well, I'm appreciative of the additional efforts made by the Oregon School District to establish online schooling. Disappointed by the lack of in-person learning option for all ages. The CDC recommends in-person schooling. Several schools in adjoining counties have successfully implemented some form of in-person learning. The science overwhelmingly shows there's no increased risk to students or staff, given the enhanced safety measures that would be in place, arguably safer than other years. I and many other parents would welcome the opportunity to meet with you and Dr. Bergstrom to understand the criteria that has been used to make decisions up to this point and also to understand what criteria will be used to make the decision in the future. Your role as a board member, or board members, is to aid in the development of our most precious resource to blindly follow direction from public health of Dane County without understanding how they arrived at their numbers or what doing your own research is a failure of your obligations to our kids. You are to the students, parents, and staff to do the research, implement an in-person or hybrid plan for all ages, and be able to explain the criteria used to arrive in this decision. Dr. Bergstrom wrote a lengthy response to that to Mr. Schleem over the weekend, and I think Leslie, you're gonna be addressing a lot of that stuff later on, unless you want me to read your response to him at this point. We're good?
That's fine. We can move forward. My presentation includes many of the major points.
Great. Mr. Schleem, thank you for providing your opinion to us. We hope you understand that we're listening. And we hope you understand that there are a lot of different viewpoints and a lot of paths here, and that this is a complicated situation, but we are listening, as I hope you understand through the conversation tonight. So thank you for taking the time and effort to share your thoughts with us. I think that's all we've got in terms of communications. Anybody else? Okay. If not, we'll go to OEA report. And Laura or Jason?
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Laura, anything?
Just really briefly, just that we continue to appreciate very much the collaboration with the school board and the district, also that we support the science-based approach of the district and the guidance of Dane County Public Health. And we also very much appreciate the family and community support and their flexibility as we just all try to navigate these difficult times. So that's it. Thank you.
Your dog's got my dog barking in the background now.
Sorry. He hasn't.
Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Laura. All right, student report. And I've been so busy. I haven't had to check in. Jim, are our students online tonight? Can you guys pop up and say a few words to us? Hi, guys.
Yes, so I'm Andrew. One of the two co-presidents this year with Chloe Jacobson. I'm not sure if she's on your screen yet, but we don't really have much because the school year just started. We are starting open applications for student council, though, and Chloe was just on a meeting to kind of find out information on different school projects we can do under virtual circumstances, so she can talk more about that now.
Hello, everyone. I recently attended a Wisconsin Association of School Council's meeting with Ms. Hurkis, the student council advisor, and it was really great to get some different ideas of how to promote student involvement and engagement and school spirit throughout the school year with having a virtual environment. So we got some great ideas for homecoming and other little fundraisers we can do. So excited about that.
Terrific. Sorry about not reaching out. It's been kind of hectic with the start of school. And assuming things went okay, started okay on your online programs?
Yeah, they went pretty well. Little hectic, really busy, a lot of dropped calls in the middle of classes, but we're getting there. Teachers are figuring it out. Should be pretty good soon.
So you're nodding your head, Chloe, too?
Yeah, I agree. I think as time goes on, we'll all get used to it, and some of the technological glitches will work themselves out. But I've had a good start to the school year.
Great. And I'm gonna reach out to you with Mr. Pliner and Dr. Bergstrom, and let's do a Zoom coffee meeting sometime so we can talk about our role and kind of things that we can discuss with the board and help work through as you guys work through this online venture, okay? So Jim, why don't you reconnect up and we'll work out a virtual coffee meeting with these guys? Okay, thanks for participating.
Thank you.
That's not your real office, is it?
No, it's actually my father's. I didn't want to do my room because the lighting in there is really terrible, but I figured, you know, got the flags behind me, the nice setup, so.
It looks very presidential.
Thank you.
Okay, good. That closes out our information session. We go to item C on the action items, and that's the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one preliminary budget. And as a preface, this is, the recommendation will be to approve the preliminary budget tonight so that we can post the agenda for the annual meeting whereby we adopt or the electors adopt the levy for the current school year. So Leslie, are you gonna start off, or Andy?
Andy will give us a start.
Okay, go ahead, Andy. The floor is yours. And then when Andy's done, then I'm gonna walk through each of the board members one by one with an opportunity to ask questions, kind of like we've normal done that. Okay. Great, thank you.
Perfect. Can everybody see the orange slideshow? All right, great. So we'll go through this fairly quickly. This is gonna be kind of a high-level presentation. As Steve said before, this is kind of a document that's just used to start the process a little bit with public engagement. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the process because with people are new to this process, it may seem a little strange, but there's some history as to why it is the way it is. First of all, you need to know obviously that the board can set the annual meeting. They typically can set it, I believe, from July first until the end of October. Our board has chosen in the past to set it at the Fourth Monday in September. And in the past, way back in the past, back in the nineties, some things changed in the state process. It used to be that the annual meeting, meeting of the electorate is when the tax levy was basically set for the year. But a number of years ago, I believe it was in ninety-two or ninety-three, when revenue limits were approved, that process had to change because a key component of the revenue limits is student enrollments. And student enrollment was set as the third Friday in September, and it does take some time to kind of marinate that data and try to figure out what that number is. So the third Friday is actually this coming Friday, and it'll take us a week or two after that to basically kind of calculate what that number is and then what that corresponding revenue that we can raise is. And then it also is dependent on the State Department of Revenue to give us what our access, equal assess value is. That happens typically by October first, and then to certify our state aid, which helps us also set our levy, and that doesn't typically happen until mid-October. So hence, the original budget, when all that information is put together, is typically done in the end of October when we approve our original budget. So tonight's just the preliminary budget. I'll talk a little bit more about it at the annual meeting, so you might hear some repetition if you listen tonight, as well as in two weeks from now. And basically, as I just said, the reason that we go through this process now and it's preliminary is that we just don't have all the pieces of information that we need to set the original budget. So the big three that I've already talked about is state equalization aid, which is known in the middle of October, enrollments. And that's two types of enrollments, resident enrollments, which means you lived in Oregon School District, regardless if you go to school here enrollment-wise, but if you live here, we have to count you. And then as well as open enrolled students in, in the past, our district has had more open enrolled students come into the district than have left by about a two-to-one ratio, actually even three-to-one ratio, and then the assessed values, which I just mentioned before. So another key component to the budget from a very high level is this concept that our revenues, if you look at it without diving very deep into it, don't necessarily mean our expenses, which is never a great idea or feeling for a budget, but it's because what we're using funds that weren't spent the prior year. And we do that for a couple of different reasons. Typically, we do that for encouraging long-term planning from our departments in our schools. I can tell you before we started this process in Oregon and from my previous employment, typically what happens if you don't have a policy like this is schools start looking at things that they can buy at the end of the year because they're afraid they're gonna lose money. And that happens with departments as well. So by having these funds brought over from the prior fiscal year, you have just a lot better decision-making as far as that than you would otherwise. And that's just human nature. It gets, it also makes the business office totally crazy because we're chasing down purchases at the end of the year, which is never a good thing either, because sometimes they don't end up coming through when they need to, and then everybody's confused as to why they're following your budget is already impacted before they've spent any money for it. Accountability. Typically, what we've done is, and we haven't had this happen actually ever, but it's always kind of there, is the idea is that if you have money left over, you get to bring it over to the next year. If you spend more money than you have left over, there's kind of an implied threat that perhaps that money could be taken from your prior, your next year's budget. So there's some accountability there. And the last component of this is why we do this, is kind of a thermometer on school budgets. Typically, our school budgets have been based on historical allocation models, so it's a per-student amount. So as your enrollment goes up or goes down, it changes. But the question is always, is that amount adequate or not to run the school? And if you have amounts that are brought over from the prior year on spent funds, then that's a clear indication that the allocations seem to be adequate at that level. So those are the three reasons why we do it. The what, what budgets are we talking about? We're talking about all the school budgets, so all seven schools now, as well as the departments, most of them, not all. Some of the budgets, the departments that we haven't carried over are actually the largest ones, which are staffing, haven't been carried over in the past. And then strategic planning concepts. So you may notice a large allocation in our budget that was brought over or is proposed to be brought over from last year is related to our staff compensation system, which has monies that hadn't been spent as we implemented that process, as well as what we spent some time talking about already this year, which is the dollars. Are you guys frozen or is it, okay, Tim moved? Good. I was a little afraid I lost everybody. The last thing that we talked about several meetings already this summer and fall was the relationship to money that didn't spend, wasn't spent last year, wasn't related to all these departments in those areas, was brought over specifically so that we could address some of our needs in this environment with COVID- nineteen. So with that being said, when I get into, and we basically took my favorite sheet, which is kind of one sheet typically that shows all the things going on at a very high level in the district. School budgeting is done in funds, and funds have specific purposes, so we'll go through them. But usually it's on one sheet this year so that it fits on the PowerPoint, the slideshow. We broke it down into two, although it's in one sheet in your packet. So we first grouped the two funds together, the general fund and the special education fund, together because they are interrelated with each other. The general fund, quite honestly, pays for the majority of our expenses for the school district. So it is obviously the largest. And what we start with here, just to kind of format this real quickly in everybody's minds, is we start with kind of a fund balance at the beginning of the year. And this year, we, as we have in the past, broke out some of these assigned fund balances, which are these funds that were on spent prior year, and we kind of break them out a little bit so that you can see the different components of that amount of money. So all total, the fund balance at July first or June thirtieth was fourteen million two sixty-six. And then we add our projected revenues. And then we add our projected revenues, we subtract our projected expenses. We have something called transfers or sources, which are basically transfers in and out of accounts. And I'll talk about that. And then our projected fund balance at the end of the year. So I will work you through that real quick with general fund. You can see the building carryover, departmental carryover, Department of Instruction, which had a fairly large amount. So we broke that out this last year. And then the teacher compensation amount. And then we have COVID, the 1.5 million that we've talked about over the last several months. So revenues at about $53 million. And then our expenditures broken out in those areas. Typically, what we do is we do budget, at least preliminarily, to say that we are going to spend all those funds. That's probably not accurate, especially with the teacher compensation component. So we might change that for the original budget. But at this point in time, we were just trying to show a real quick impact of that. So if you spent all the carryover dollars, you'd see the fund balance going from 14.266 to about 11.3. When we come back to the original budget, we'll probably have a little bit better estimate of that for that time. You'll also see a transfer out or use out of about $6.1 million. You'll see the majority of that going to our next fund. And that's because special education is required to have a zero budget at the end of the year. So it doesn't have a fund balance component each year. It's quite honestly, just it's a designed fund for DPI's purposes. And so if you look at our audit, they actually merge these funds together. But for DPI's purposes, we're required to separate these things. And you see the grants are brought out too. We have about $1.1 million in grants. And then everything else doesn't really have a funding source. So it requires that transfer from special, from the education fund to or the general fund to pay for that. So that's where you see that amount. Go to the next page, which basically lists all the other funds, which are really kind of supportive of the general fund. Special projects fund is kind of grouped sometimes with the special education fund, it's Fund 21. And there's something a little unusual going on this year with that. We had a new GASB proclamation done. GASB stands for the Governmental Accounting Standards Bureau. And they are a basically a nationwide organization that sets governmental accounting standards for the for the nation. And they basically looked at some of our funds that they designed, they basically were concerned about control, who controls these funds? And we have funds that are kind of what in the past have been called agency funds. So in other words, somebody else is controlling those funds and we're just a custodian of them. We're not, we're not necessarily making decisions on those use of those funds. And the newest GASB ruling basically said, if you are really controlling those funds and how they're spent, in this situation, it was for scholarships, then those funds shouldn't be in our 70 fund area, our agency funds anymore. They should be moved into the Fund 20 area from from DPI's perspective and related to the GASB ruling. So we did move those funds in there, and that's why you see the two asterisks there. We moved the scholarship balances into Fund 21. It really doesn't mean anything from an operational point of view. It's just complying with the new GASB rulings. So you can see that we anticipate a very similar revenues to expenses in that fund and ending the year approximately where we started it. Non-referendum funds, we actually are kind of on the the end of being talking about this in the next several years. This is paying for the district's unfunded liability to WRS. We refinanced that probably in my first or second year here in the school district. And we are coming close now to actually paying that off. So it's held in a different fund, is included within our revenue limitation formula. So those funds will go back and be available for general, the general fund purposes in about two to three years as we pay off that liability. Debt service pays for the bonds for when we do capital projects. So we've been doing some significant capital projects over the last decade or so. So those are the funds that we raised. They're outside the revenue limit, but they're available to basically pay our bond payments. And they, the revenue and the expenses don't always line up real nice because bond payments can be a little bit off, they're close. But you can see the expenditures being a little bit higher than the revenues of this particular year. That's nothing to be concerned about. That's that's all planned in the schedules. Long-term capital improvement trust funds, we established that this year. We had $100. At this point in time, we're not showing additional contributions, but that might be something we we reconsider down the road. And we can do that even after the fiscal year is over, if we want to, into July actually of next year. Referendum bonds, these are the proceeds of the bonds for the project at Forest Edge and the properties that we purchased. So you can see that at June 1st, I'm sorry, July 1st, we still have of almost $6.5 million left over. Those funds are obviously being paid out for the, as the completion of Forest Edge is done. We have a couple of projects which will extend into actually next year. Most like, most, most of that is related to a fiber project that we will, we will be designing here in the next couple of months. But they will be done probably or will be done sometime in the next, in next fall. The next fund is related to food service. And you see that right now we show quite a bit of a difference in our revenue to expenses. We do hope to improve upon that significantly. There was something that happened about two weeks ago that was fairly significant and has significantly changed the amount of food preparation that we're doing right now. And that's when the USDA decided, at least through the end of this calendar year, to open up our food service program similar to how they did this last spring and summer to everybody in the school district. And when we shared that with our community, lots of people decided to take advantage of that. And we geared up very quickly so that we could start providing more meals. So this number was created at that point in time, needs to be revised and will be revised as we move toward the original budget. But you can see that that 655 is making up the difference between that $6 million that was transferred out of Fund N into into Fund 27, the special education fund. This is the the difference there, about 650,000 is what we were projecting we would need. Hopefully, that extension that USDA did might carry forward into after December 31st. And we'd be able to continue to fund or more of food service through the actual production of foods. We do have a significant portion of our food service department now working in food service. So they will be helping to make those food, that food and bring in that revenue. But we do have some people also in our food service department that are helping other areas in our district with cleaning and bus supervision as well. So those students, those employees will be compensated in that through those funds. The next couple of funds are a little complicated, but not too bad. An employee trust fund was created a number of years ago. Our district chooses when people leave for or actually retire from our district, whether based on some questions that Human Resources asks, whether they can get funds for future use of insurance or into a 403B investment vehicle for them. Both are tax deferred, but we have a private ruling, a private letter ruling from the IRS that allows us to create this fund and allows our employees that have a need for future health insurance benefits to be able to put those, have those funds put into that area for them. And then our OPEB liability pays for those employees that were hired a number of years ago that were promised that health insurance after retirement for a few years. And these funds basically provide an asset against that liability that we're need required to project every two years per another GASB, I think it was GASB 34, years and years ago. So we have to now basically show that liability. And this district a number of years ago made the strategic decision that we wanted to show some assets against that liability. Very happy to report that the liability is around $7.5 million. But we have almost, or right around $5 million of assets supporting that liability at this point. So it's it's more, the majority of it is actually funded. Our community education fund, we break that down into three different components based on three different people that are kind of managing that component. So we have the pool fund, which Deb Bossenham keeps keeps control over. And we have opened our pool since, I believe, July after the Fourth a little bit. And so we are running that on a very kind of restricted basis, but in a safe way that we feel we could do so. And so we did work toward reducing costs and aligning those costs as best that we could. We're actually looking at increasing some of our fees to compensate for some of the increased costs that we have in that fund just because we can't have as many people as we normally have utilize the the pool. But we are working to make that work as best as we can. And then we have the community education fund, which runs all of our programming for adults and students or children in our community. Those programs have changed a little bit as we are not able to do as many things in person as we would like. And we've reduced that a little bit as well. And then the performing arts center, which right now is is not running much at all. But we're keeping, you know, the equipment tuned up and those types of things in that area as well, as well as using the performing arts center directors talents in any way that we can. So you can see, one of the things that I'll mention with community ed fund is similar to special education fund that was changed a couple of years ago in that it has to have a zero budget and or it has to project a zero fund balance at the end of the year. And so you see zeros on the far right-hand side of that. If we were to accumulate a budget in that fund, then that would reduce our tax levy for the following year. Cooperative purchases is simply a fund right now, it basically runs two things. The Badger Conference expenses go through that as well as, and I'm just going to forget the federal grants right now. Perhaps Leslie can help me out with that. I just lost the name of it. Greg Granberg runs a vocational education federal grant through that with a cooperative of, I'm not even sure how many districts. I think it might be six or seven at this point in time.
It's Carl Perkins, Andy.
That's it. I knew there was a name. I just couldn't think of the name. Thank you, Dr. Bergstrom. So I've given you more than enough to shoe on, and I'm sure you have tons of questions that you're wanting to ask me. I'm happy to try to answer them as best I can.
All right. Tim, you're up. And then Krista, you're on deck.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Andy, thanks for going through that and boiling it down to a couple of slides. I appreciate it. I am looking at the budget adoption pages in the packet that you sent out.
You bet.
And so I'm on the first page of that, actually. So I have a couple of questions there. Let's see, in the local sources area, and this is income sources, line 260, the non-capital sales. Does that, is that the, it's about $426,000 in the budget? Does that happen to be the schoolhouse?
Yes, it does. We just sold that a couple of weeks ago. So that's, you're on the revenue side of that. So we just realized those revenues. Yep.
Very good. And where where do we stand in terms of real estate ownership in that area?
You bet. We have one lot remaining. It's right next to the lot that we sold this last year. So there were actually three lots that we purchased. And so we have one lot remaining. We did decide this year to work with a builder rather than risk kind of what happened this last year. So we are working with a local builder and the kids will be working on that job site, adhering to those safety requirements with that and our instructor.
Okay. And again, that is over off of Alpine Parkway, right? The new subdivision off Alpine Parkway?
You are correct, yes.
All right, very good. In your, in the fun summary that you have up on the screen right now, food service drew my attention. And it's showing $300,000 of year-to-date revenue and $955,000 of expenditures. Where does that 300,000 come from?
So that's actually a budget. It's not, we haven't, we haven't brought that much money in yet. I would say that we've probably brought in over the summer around $50,000 somewhere in that neighborhood with our summer offerings. So that's just our best guess at where we were going to land. Now, keep in mind that that projection was done probably about a month ago before we had the knowledge that USDA had opened up everything to all of our 18 and under residents. Actually, even non-residents could could get food from us as long as we know that they're 18 or less.
And so what that sounds like to me is it's going to cost us a fair amount more to deliver on that program. And and so I'm reflecting back on the August 10th meeting where we had transferred from last year's budget about a million and a half dollars for COVID-related expenses. And of that million and a half dollars, it was actually a little more than a million and a half dollars, I believe. $750,000 was targeted for food service.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the 955 surprised me without question because I had a bit to say about the 750 that we were already looking at. And to have it come back in at another $200,000 plus startled me. So tell me about that.
You bet, you bet. So let me suggest that the way you might want to look at is to compare the 750 to the 655 that we're bringing in from the other fund. So we've always knew that we were going to bring in some revenue into Fund 50. So this just basically, at the time, about a month ago, we were anticipating that instead of $750,000 in the transfer, as we worked through the numbers, we thought, okay, I think we got it down to 655. I will tell you that my hope is to, between now and the original budget, that we'll get that number down a little bit more based on what I mentioned before with USDA offering, basically paying us to offer food to 18 younger residents or non-residents in the district. We, that that is a program that is fairly profitable for us. Not as profitable if we were providing food service in a normal year, but much more profitable than if we were trying to charge people to basically sell our food.
So that $300,000 is reflective of the increase in dollars that we are going to be receiving from the USDA as opposed to revenue that we're receiving from high school kids buying lunch in the lunch line?
Correct, correct. Yep. And and what I would actually say is our 300, when we, when we created this budget, was actually our best guess at how much we would make from federal and state sources as well as people paying for those lunches. So and breakfast. So now that we have, we don't have to actually charge our residents, I would say that that number will be higher, quite a bit higher. I would guess it will be probably closer into the half-million-dollar mark. But it's hard for me to say because it's only for half a year. So we we get the benefit of this situation at least until December 31st. And then we'll have to reassess it as well.
And so with that in mind, if we have a net benefit in that area, for instance, of a couple hundred thousand dollars, would I, can I expect that of the million and a half dollar transfer we have out there that that transfer will result in less of it being used?
Yes, less of it being used for food service and hopefully less of it being used altogether.
Okay, sure. All right, I appreciate that. Let's see, if there was anything else I had specifically. Yes, another item is the enrollment. I know we have, we are coming up on Friday, the 18th, for Third Friday, September, enrollment counts. And I know we don't have those yet. And in some of the preparatory material that we have here, we were noticing that we're down about 22 students from where we anticipated a month or six weeks ago. And knowing that each student brings with that student about $8,200, the absence of $160,000, $70,000, $80,000 because of that reduction is significant. Do we have an idea, although we're not there, I understand Friday's the date. Do we have an indication of where that number is? Do we have an indication of where that number is? What are we expecting for that number on Friday?
So the number that's in the packet was our best guess probably about, again, four weeks ago or so. I don't have any newer information at this point in time. My newest information that I can share with you, though, is in a call that I had with Madison Area School Business Officials in Middleton, Sun Prairie, Menona Grove, McFarland. Everybody is expecting less enrollment. And for me to say that about Sun Prairie and Middleton is fairly significant because those are growing districts. So I don't know. We are starting, in fact, we had about an hour of calls today. Because not only is this is a little bit more difficult because we started the year a few days later than normal, but in this world where we're doing online enrollments, it's just a different process. And so making sure that everybody's on the same page is a little bit more difficult. So I don't know exactly where we're going to be. And that's all I can really tell you at this point.
Dr. Bergstrom, do you have a sense? Do you have any other sense that than what Andy has on where we're going to be come Friday? And I'm just being conscious of the fact that every, for every 10 kids, it's 80 some thousand dollars. And the likelihood is our expense isn't going to go down, but our revenue may.
Well, originally, for instance, when the emergency order came out, we knew we had some people who were open and rolling out to other districts. And that certainly continued for a portion. And we also had some people come back, and we also had some people move in. So I do think that, you know, we had more than anyone would want, open and rolling into another district. But when I spoke with our counterparts and other parts of Dan County, we had significantly less than the other people I spoke to. So that part I consider to be really good news. As far as an exact number, I think we'll probably have to wait for Friday. But I have some good news to report related to our kids who are attending. So I'll get to that in a little while.
All right, very good.
And Tim, I might just give you a little bit more information quickly. The open enrollment amount that you're talking about, the $8,000 is absolutely accurate. Those are for open enrolled students, and that's why we reduced that number because that has the biggest impact on year one. The residents that we have that might be moving out of our district, for instance, that doesn't change as fast because there's a three-year averaging that happens there. So the number is closer to $12,000 that we obtained for those students. But if you have to take it divided by three to have it impact in one particular year. So it's a little bit more complicated than just the 8,000. And actually, the residence doesn't hurt us as much in one year as the open enrolled. The other thing I'll share with open enrolled is a little bit nuanced as well. Open resident students, it really, really, really matters, that third Friday number, because they have to attend either before or on that day and after that day if they didn't attend on that day. But open enrollment is prorated. So we are hoping that if a student does leave us and goes, for instance, to Evansville, if they, if we can get to a point where they want to come back, then that amount of money comes back with them for the remainder of the year. So there's a, there's a plus side there.
You bet. And obviously, earlier in the meeting tonight, we heard of that one, at least one Evansville transfer. And that's, that hurts, it does. So that's all I was curious about. So those are really the only questions I have at the moment. So thank you both for the information.
You bet.
Krista and Troy, you're on deck.
Thanks. Tim asked a few of my questions I had about food service, but I have, do have one more about that, Andy. With the food service program that we have now with the USDA, we're, and we are delivering meals. So where is that transportation cost allocated? Is that allocated to food service or is that transportation?
No, it would be, since it's related to supporting food service, it'd be food service.
Okay. So then my question is, I do see that we have the same, you know, a pretty, I guess the transportation budget then is my next question. Are we going to realize any savings there or is that?
That's, that's a great.
Based on previous years or?
Yes, it is currently based on previous years. And I'll share with you, at one point in time, I was thinking that we might have some savings there, and we may. We will, quite honestly, for at least the first week of instruction, because we didn't provide transportation then. But as we gear up, if we gear up to multiple days of instruction, or I'm sorry, like an AM and PM situation, then we are almost running regular routes, if you would, because we're running the students in the elementary to school and home. And then we're running a second route, which could be looked at almost like high school routes of those students in and out. So very quickly, we will be basically spending very similar amounts of transportation if we get to that AM PM situation. So we chose not to reduce that budget at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. I just had a question about that. So that cleared that up. Then my next question is not such a huge revenue impact, but a 52% increase in insurance. Can you just share what that is from?
Yeah, so that is not health insurance or dental insurance. So make that real clear. That is property insurance, workers' comp insurance, liability insurance. Mostly, it is property insurance. We just obviously have some more property on our district rolls as well as the new school. That doesn't make up for all of that, but if you're familiar with the property insurance going on in the state of Wisconsin, actually, I think it's a nationwide thing. There have been some significant losses and from the insurance companies. And quite honestly, the, I don't know that they've been making as much money in the investment side of things. And so they, the rates have gone up significantly.
Okay. Then my last question is just clarification about special ed fund. I noticed that the special education grant, you know, has the 1.1 as the expense and the revenue. So is that, are those grants designated, they have to be spent exactly on certain things associated with special ed? Is that?
Yeah, yeah. The majority of that is IDEA funding that Dr. Wiedensee manages. So and then there's, I think there's another couple funds that are in there or grants that are in there as well. But most of it's the federal IDEA. And then there's some categorical funding that we get through the state of education, the state. That's not restricted for specific purposes, but it needs to be spent on, it needs to be spent so that you get the corresponding revenue that connects to it the following year. So it is and it isn't, but it has to be spent for you to get the categorical back.
Okay. Those were my questions. Thank you.
You bet.
Troy, and then Anna, you're next.
Okay. So Tim had asked my question about enrollment, but I guess I want to probe a little bit further specifically on open enrollment. We have a decrease of 22 students in open, in open enrolle, open enrollment out. Is that number pretty solid? I mean, knowing that we have to go through a paperwork process to approve that. Are we, are we solid on 22?
I believe that was solid a few weeks ago before, I'm trying to think here, at the timing of this. It was, it was based on, like I said, three, four weeks ago. I think as Dr. Bergstrom said, you know, we've kind of had some ins and outs. We, I just don't know for sure where we landed on it. But we took the kind of the more conservative approach at that time. It's just that we've had some more movement specifically with, with Dane County doing what they've done and other counties not.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, I can't give you a better answer. If you give me a couple of weeks, I hope you're able to.
Yeah. And then I guess my next question is on the assessed value. Looking at the chart that you had provided with the history, that was very helpful. Thanks for including that. You know, I noticed we're, our estimate right now is an increase of 5%. And look at the last four years, and we've always been greater than, than 5% over the last four years. Anecdotally, to me, it seems like we would be on track to exceed that again this year. However, I, I agree with the conservative estimate on that. Is, can you maybe just speak to that, Andy, in terms of, you know, you track, I know you track this pretty closely. And, you know, knowing that if we exceed that budgeted value, that's a direct decrease in our mill rate, correct?
Absolutely. It doesn't change your spending authority, but it does change our mill rate. And you're absolutely right. I try not to be overly optimistic with that number because the last thing I want to do is share with people a levy rate that then we can't obtain based on a number of factors. I will tell you, I did look at the data. What I have to look at until typically October 1st, when they certify this number, is I have to look at the individual taxing districts and look and see what's going on in their area. And it's preliminary data. And as I recall, I felt comfortable with five. It could be six. But I felt really comfortable with five, trying to look at our biggest districts. Quite honestly, the hardest thing I have is, so I have to look at entire taxing jurisdiction. So the top, the one that's the toughest is Fitchburg. Because Fitchburg has three different school districts in it, and it's not broken out for me. So I have to kind of look at that number and try to do an educated guess where the growth has been. And, and then something called TIF districts enter into that as well, which doesn't allow us to access the assessed value growth in those particular areas. So it's a little bit complicated, but I definitely did take a conservative approach. And my hope is that we do have 6% or so growth.
Okay. Thank you for adding that commentary. Related to that, on our, on our property tax line, on our projected revenues, our projected increase from, from last year's budget is 10.6% on the, on the property tax line. How does that relate to that EAV number? And, because I know it's not quite a direct, you know, it's not a direct relationship. I guess what jumps out to me is that 10.6 number seems, seems higher than it, than it would be.
Yeah. Yeah. And let me, let me share with you why. So it has to do with the referendum back in 2018. And if I didn't mention that more in the agenda item, I should have. If you recall, we have an override question that was approved by the taxpayers. And that, that actually, I think, had a larger impact than the bonds. I think it was, it was, it was 2.1 million. Now, we had to take 400,000 off because that was for the capital improvement projects that we've done over the last several years. And there was a 10-year non-recurrent referendum that went away. And then we just moved it into that, and it had to do with, we were only limited to two questions. Where in the past, we've done three in these situations. So the real number that is impacting the levy is about $1.7 million in additional funding to basically run the new school. That includes staffing, fixed staffing for that building as well as utilities, cleaning staff. All those different things were included in that. So you've got, one way to look at it would be the assessed values go up 5%. And then you have this number associated with new students that are kind of adding an impact to the levy as well as the override question to get to that 10% impact.
Then that makes sense. So bottom line is that that's, that's really a one-time increase that's been approved by our taxpayers as part of the operational increase with FES. So that, that, that's all coming together now in my head. That, that makes sense.
Yep.
Let's see here, capital projects. So Fund 40. You mentioned that 250 for the connection to the Muffin Network. That's, that's budgeted, but that's just basically going to be a carryover into, into the next.
Yes, yes. We, it has to do with E-rate funding. We will actually get some of that funding back. So we did it in stages to take advantage of E-rate funding. The consultant that we hired to help us with this process didn't think that it would be a smart idea to do both projects in one year. So they wanted to separate the two, two grant years.
Okay. And then Fund Service or Food Service in the, in the 50 Fund, Tim and, Tim and Krista kind of hit on this already. I guess in my head, when I look at that 300,000 versus the 955, that, tell me if I'm thinking about this correctly, but as we, if we increase our sale of lunches, we become more efficient in, you know, dollar for dollar in how, how we operate and create our income in that fund, right? So it's, the more, the more lunches we sell, the more income we get from USDA or, or paid lunches, if we're talking about the latter part of the school year. But our, many of our expenses are constant, mainly the labor expenses are going to be constant. So as we increase our sales, we become more efficient in, in that, in that fund. Is that, am I thinking about that correctly?
You absolutely are. We're, that labor is being utilized to produce more revenue.
And then lastly, on Fund Number 80, we're decreasing our community ed programming budget, but we're increasing our pool, pool funding. Can you just speak to, I mean, are we, is that an actual transfer between those, those sub-funds or is it?
I guess you could look at it that way, and I might have misspoke before as I'm rethinking this a little bit. Our pool operations, because, because we're being, we're limiting the amount of revenue that we can bring in because it's become less efficient, if you would. And so what I thought would be important is that our community ed levy not increase. So we approached Amy Miller and said, hey, what are you thinking? And she's like, well, I can't run as many programs because we can't be, you know, a physical component here. So she figured out ways to reduce her expenditures so that we could get to a point where we had the same tax levy for our community ed as we had in the past. Because we did, really didn't think that it would be less services and more tax levy didn't make sense. So we thought the best we could do is try to freeze that. Unfortunately, the pool is less efficient. It just cannot have as many members in it and bringing in as much revenue as we would. Even if we increase fees, we didn't think we could reach where we needed to be. The other component of that is, we did have a carryover last year, I believe. And so you see that there's a $29 million amount of money left in the fund last year. That had to reduce, that had to reduce the levy for this year. And so that, there's an impact there as well.
And we would expect that, all other things being equal, if, if we get back to a normal year next year, that would kind of flip back where we'd have more income in the, in the pool fund. And we could, we could allocate that money back to community service offerings.
Absolutely.
Okay. And that's all I had for questions. Thank you.
You bet.
Anna, you're up, and then Kevin.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Everyone's covered quite a few really good questions already. With regards to the Equalization Aid Allocation Item Number One, obviously, this, this budget is based on July 1st DPI projection. How confident are we, I guess, at this point with that projection, given the state of things at the, just physically, financially, how confident are we with that?
Um, I haven't heard any, anybody talking about reducing the Equalization Aid. Nobody's projecting that. It has an impact on the tax levy, obviously. So for legislators to mess with that number, they actually could be increasing the property taxes, which going into the election year is not something most would want to talk about. So I may have mentioned this in the past, if there is a shortfall. And I want to say that we've had some pretty good news over the last month or so. But if there is a shortfall, the common thought is that they would reduce our per pupil categorical aid, which is not paid until the spring. So we are basing this on current law right now. That revenue is in our budget at current law. And I would say that over the last month or so, I'm more confident. And I would say that over the last month or so, I'm more confident that that number will not be reduced. But I feel very confident that Equalization Aid will not be reduced.
Okay. Great. Well, that's good to hear. And my next question is related to the 1.5 million that we've kind of earmarked for the COVID-19 expenses. I guess, just a question for my own purposes, and maybe it was described when we discussed this. Does that take into account bringing back in-person learning? At what reopening phase are we projecting those dollars to cover? Meaning, have we taken into account all of the measures that we feel might need to be taken to increase our in-person learning? Or do we see additional expenses related to that that are not already accounted for in the 1.5 million?
So what I would say is this, I would say there's kind of some moving targets in both the revenue and expense side. So if we were, let's just say that we were in person on January 5th, or whenever we come back from winter break. Well, then Food Service would all of a sudden ramp up and we would have more revenue there. So we'd have less of a need to put money into helping Food Service. And then that would free up dollars that we could then use if we do need some more PPE type things, if we need more face shields or we need more filters or something of that nature. So I feel pretty confident that we can kind of manage those dynamics as they come at us. We've taken a fairly conservative approach at how we've built the budget so that if we go in person, things get better.
Okay. Okay. Great. Those really were my, the only other questions I had besides things everyone has already kind of clarified. So thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks for the great presentation. Can you hear me? Okay. Good. Thanks for the great presentation. Going through the first budgeting process and you taking us line by line was very helpful for me. There's been a lot of great questions asked. I was going to ask the question really related to the 1.5 million dollar COVID line and get a refresher on that. I know we've talked about it a little bit in the past, but it seems like we're taking a conservative approach. And there's still a lot to be determined about timing of getting back to school and when that happens, what that's going to look like and what it's going to cause on the expense side. So I don't really have any further questions and appreciate all the good questions already asked by my fellow board members.
Heather? Beyond? Going once. There's Heather. I see her here. Can't hear you though, Heather. Okay. Well, I will go on and ask my questions and we'll come back to Heather. Andy, I noted, I went back and took a look at the numbers we were looking at revenue when we were doing our staffing projections. And for the additional student revenue, under the three-year average, we were pretty conservative back then. We were estimating an equalized value cut. And so we were projecting about 283,000, you know, for that line item. And we're projecting 294 now. So just for board members, you know, even with the little fewer students than we had projected, what we were working with in terms of staffing and the decisions we made on this budget back in April, we're higher right now in the revenue side than we were then. So even though student stuff isn't pacing right now because of circumstances, from a planning perspective, I think we're where we were back then. And it'll be interesting to see what that open enrollment budget is. Andy, does the open enrollment numbers that you have given, does that include the numbers related to opening up increased spaces that we did on July 1?
You know? That's a great question, Steve. After a while, this stuff all kind of leads together a little bit. I can find out for you. I think so, but I'm not positive. I think it was based on actuals at that point in time. And I'm not sure we had accepted people yet.
Yeah, just so the board knows, the board votes on the final budget in October. We just need to go to the preliminary. Andy, I want to thank you, you know, before I'm finished with the rest of my questions, because, you know, folks, we just opened a new school. And normally, at the beginning of the year, for our business manager, that's an event in and of itself that causes major disruption, trying to get that. And Andy's done that. Plus, he's putting together a budget that has tons more variables than normal and trying to focus. That's just been amazing. So even to get the numbers as close to firm as you've done now is really commendable. And, you know, people just got to be patient as we play with some of this stuff that's really outside of your control. Yeah. I think it was Troy talked about the impact of the construction referendum question and the override referendum question. And am I correct that this is the first year that our budget will have the impact of both of those on the tax levy?
Yeah. The impact of the bonds happened way back, actually, in 2018. But this year is the first year of the override. So both are in.
Could you, on the share slide, go to the mill rate slide, just so people understand this?
You know, I didn't make a slide with the mill rate. If you give me a minute, I can pull it up.
No, I got it. Well, I can, we can do it this way. I'm going to pull it here. You know, in 2017, before the construction referendum went online, our mill rate was 11,560, okay? And we're projecting 11,520 this year. So we're going to be four cents down per thousand, even after adding the construction and the override referendum, which indicates me that the new growth in this district, a lot of which is attributable to the reasons why we incurred those extra costs, have really started to fund that additional cost for both the override and for the construction bonds. Is that, do you agree with that?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So one of the things I'd like to track over the next couple of years when we settle down is try to spin that out a little bit more and see if we can look at, the proposition was when we went into those referendums that over a period of time, the additional growth attributed to the growth that's generating the need for the new buildings will pay for those new buildings and the operational costs. To me, the fact that our mill rate's going down four cents, even after we've added those two, kind of led some credence to that. So. On the Fund 80 stuff, it looks like what we're doing is using some of our fund balance to match expenses and revenues right now as best we can. Is that right?
Yeah. And that's actually, you know, to some degree required with the new community ed.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah. And I'll let people, I'll give them a little sneak preview. You know, Andy made the statement that we're not having much going on in our PAC and we're still funding our PAC director. He's really busy helping with all the music folks. And there's a little sneak preview. You'll be seeing some product of Nate Mendel and his collaboration with the music team shortly. And maybe a board member will be involved in that. But he's really busy assisting in the delivery of online curriculum through the music programs and doing that, because he's really a talented guy. So even though he's not working inside the PAC, he's working full-time and delivering curriculum. So the Food Service, just to hit that one more time, Andy. What I understand was when we were talking about how would the 1.5 million dollar excess from last year that we put into a specifically designated balance this year would be used, was that we had estimated maybe 750 would need to close the gaps between revenue and expenses. Okay? Because of the new program, we've got that down to 650, which is kind of better case scenario than we were presented when we did the 1.5. Is that right? Am I looking at that right?
Yeah. Yeah. My hope is that we can do even a little bit better by the time we move to the original budget.
Right. And that's because the 300 is a guess in terms of revenue. The 955 is fixed cost, assuming that we're continuing to employ all food service workers, correct?
Absolutely.
Correct. And so the, you know, the board's direction was to utilize that 1.5. We needed to use that for meaningful expenses. And what I'm hearing through this is that because we're now working those kitchens, you know, closer to full-time, that we need more of those to do the same type of food service prep that they've done before.
That and transportation, delivery, those types of processes. Yep.
If you could in the next couple of weeks, just let us know what type of work in terms of non-food service work, the food service workers are doing. You know, some of it seems to be related to food service in terms of getting that food to our students. But if you, that would, I think, just help the board, you know, in terms of due diligence on the meaningful work phase of that.
Okay.
Other than that, oh, I would just note that, you know, we talked a little bit about the special ed expenditures. And, you know, we spend about 8.8 million, if I looked at that right, and we get 3.4 back from the government. You know, that's maybe a third of what we spend. You know, and the government promise back then was two-thirds. So, you know, over the years, under the formula, the government has not, the state has not lived up to its, and federal government has not lived up to their promise of two-thirds. We're funding one-third of their obligation on that. So.
Yeah. And, you know, give a little credit. This last budget actually did increase a little bit. So, but it's the first increase probably in probably my 20 years here. So it's got a long ways to go.
Andy, thanks for a really good presentation. Heather, do you have any questions? I see you're back live. You're muted.
I'm here. No, I just have had technology issues. I heard the whole presentation, but my camera wouldn't work. So, but thank you, Andy. That was really helpful. I guess the advantage of going last is that everybody has asked really amazing questions. So I think I am all set for now, but wanted to thank Andy for the time and all of the detail. It was really helpful.
Great. And Heather, and Kevin, and anybody else, as we, in two weeks, we present this to the electorate just to approve the levy. But our work on the budget won't be done until October. So if you want to do a review or anything, we can set up a time with Andy where we'll do that. And I'd like to be part of that too. And that's open to any board member. So just send me an email if you'd like to have another go-through of this so you understand it before we get to October. All right? Did any of the questions that anybody asked generate any questions from any other board member? Okay. I don't see anybody, and I've got you all on the tile, so I don't see any of that. So I need a motion to approve the 2020-21 budget, tentative budget, preliminary budget as recommended and for presentation at the annual meeting.
This is Troy. I'll make a motion to approve the 2020-21 preliminary budget as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Tim's got the second. Okay. Any discussion? And just put thumbs up if you want to say anything. All right. Call the roll.
Mr. Bankrats?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Ms. Arison?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Flannigan?
Yes.
Ms. B. Jack?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes. Preliminary budget is approved and it can be published. And time to have that for our annual meeting in two weeks. Thank you, Andy. And thanks to you. Give your team thanks for helping put that together.
I will.
Thanks, Andy.
You bet.
Okay. That takes us to Agenda Section D, Discussion Items. Committee reports anything from Policy Anna?
Nothing to report at this time.
Vision.
Nothing to report. We have not met in the past couple of weeks.
Okay. Takes us to Information Items E, Opening of School 2021. And we're off. It was great to get started and got done with planning and actual working. And Dr. Bergstrom, this is your time to update the board. And then when Leslie's done, if anybody has any questions about that or any comments, we'll go through the board to do that, to give some feedback to Leslie. Okay? Good. Go ahead, Dr. Bergstrom.
All right. I'm going to start off by showing everybody, you know, open this up a little bit, the video that we sent home to our kids. And there's a reason for it. I'll explain that at the end.
Hello Oregon School District students and families. Our school year starts tomorrow. Starting with school year on a pandemic, we look and feel different for everyone. But our teachers and our staff have been preparing all summer. And we can't wait to begin. But before we do, we wanted to take a moment to send you a special message on behalf of the entire Oregon School District. Because we care about you. Because we care about you.
We redesigned learning methods, formats, and schedules.
We've created extra help and safety procedures. And we have warm and secure access resources to help you. Because we care about you. We want you to know that whether you're learning online or in-person small groups, we commit to upholding our promise.
Delivering high-quality instruction and experiences to each and every student every day.
In a way, since our school, we will be safe. Because we care about you. We have created a thoughtful and careful reopening plan. Because we care about you.
We will start slow to go fast.
We will take time to connect and build relationships. So when one is in safety, we are ready. Because we care about you. We know that our kindness and compassion toward one another will be unmatched this year.
And we know, no matter where we start, will not determine where we're going.
We are all in this together, and together, we are going to achieve amazing things.
Because we care so much about you. Because we care about you so much.
Because we care about you.
Because we care about you.
Okay. Now I'm going to go to our regular presentation. And I'll explain to you why I wanted you to see that first. There we go. So we sent this out to our staff and families. And one of the things that I, excuse me, our students and families. And one of the things I wanted to bring up is that particular line. And it was the line that Mike Carr said in the video. And that's where we are starting is not where we will end up. And I think that's a really important thing to remember, that we are starting, and this is the second week of instruction. But this is not how we will spend our entire year. We're going to find a way forward. And that our slow start hopefully will end up allowing us to spend more time in person. So a lot has happened in this first week. And there's also, there's a lot to talk about and there's a lot to celebrate. And we feel good about how Week 1 has started for our students. So that's really what we wanted to start to talk about first, is what strategies are being employed right now for supporting our kids? And so I know from the last board meeting that our board members were very interested and wanted our regular updates on issues related to engagement and truancy. Because we wanted to make sure that we're bringing all of our kids along with us and we weren't losing anybody in this process. Consequently, our principals would have already done this, but we're being hyper-aware. And they have sent us at the district office summaries of Week 1 and attendance. How many students did not log in each day? And if they didn't log in, what was the follow-up? So we have some really good record-keeping in that. And the highest number in any one day was 16 students. But that actually went down to only five because 11 of those 16 watched the recorded lesson later. So we do have systems in place now to be able to check when students are watching something. So that if they have a technical difficulty... so that if they have a technical difficulty, or they have an odd schedule for the day, we're able to track not only when they're present for their live learning, but if they do miss it, if they're able to access it later. And so we have a system of attendance ready to go. We're utilizing it to make sure that we're understanding the needs of every one of our students. So once somebody doesn't log in, once we're worried, where are they? What are we going to do? There's a number of pieces we have to figure out how to, how to support them, basically. So we know that there are technical issues. So we have our online, our tech support line. We have online resources such as videos on how to use some of the features, because it isn't easy for everybody, and it's not all intuitive. And so we really do need to provide those supports. And we're also in the process of putting out a needs assessment, so we can better understand what type of skills our students and, and our families, for that matter, need to be able to fully access everything that we're offering. The other issue is we really talk about the family support and engagement, and that is what type of resources do we need for our families? What type of partnerships do we need to employ? And are we reaching out to parents, too? So that's, technical support is one piece. Family support and engagement is another. The other piece is social emotional support. Of course, the foundational piece of where we are right now, the foundation is build relationships, get to know people, begin to build trust. Those are the things that the learning is built upon. So we know that, and we're prioritizing that. But we also have done things like student well-being checks. Okay, we, we didn't, this person didn't log in, and nobody answered their phone, so I'm going to go over, knock on the door, and stand outside so that I'm, you know, being physically distanced, but at the same time, just making sure that you are okay. So we, we had a couple of those visits, too. And then teachers are making incredible connections with, with our students, as are our Student Services staff. And we know who a lot of our families are, who might need some extra support, so we've reached out to them. But in addition, we just sent out a well-being survey to parents, you know, basically asking our parents, have you noticed changes that concern you? Would you like someone from Student Services to contact you? Would you like someone from Student Services to reach out to your child? And that survey, I think there were 479 responses thus far, and the vast, vast majority are, no, you don't need to reach out. They're just people who are filling out the survey. No, my student's fine. No, I don't need extra support. However, there are students at every building where a family has, has put in the survey, yes, call me. I want to talk to you about this. So we're ensuring by reaching out in multiple ways, phone calls, text messages, home visits, surveys, that we're making sure that we know what's happening with our kids, and we're paying attention, and we're listening to our families, and we're listening to our students. Oh, one more thing that I want to add to that, and that's just to give you a little bit more information related to the food service piece. Because honestly, the food that people are able to pick up or have delivered is really another level of, of family support, because we know that there are many families who can come and pick up the food that works out well for their schedule, and that's wonderful. But we also know that there are a lot of students, particularly older students, who are at home while a parent or caregiver is at work. And so being able to deliver the food to students, regardless of financial need, I think is a, is a really important service we can provide families in this really difficult time. And just to show you how well utilized that was for Week One, just Week One, 2,925 meals were delivered, and 842 were picked up through the grab-and-go option. So as I said, that's, that's pretty extraordinary. And then if you want to think about how our, our food service staff are being utilized, I have some information for you, and I can certainly give you more later. But we have a large number, or a large, a kitchen full of people who are making meals, and then we have another crew delivering meals. And then we had a resignation, and a retirement, and a couple of retirements. We have four who were assigned to be bus supervisors. But we've also had some food service staff move into paraprofessional positions, positions that were vacated for a number of reasons. So instead, food service members have slid into those roles. So we're able to ensure that there is definitely meaningful work for the people who want to remain employed by the school district. So that's some of our, our good news. I think our kids were extremely responsive related to beginning their first week of school, and I'll talk more later, and the superintendent's report about the fact that today was the first day we had our K-2s, a small group of K-2s in school. You know, the classrooms were really small, from four to six kids, but they were here for two hours, and it was exciting to have them in the building. But now I'll transition into what is our thought related to planning as we move forward and, and build on this strong foundation? Well, as you know, we've been talking about these guiding principles in all of our discussions. It's become a constant in our presentations, because we have remained constant to these principles. Equity is at the center, you know, just like the whole child emphasis and all of the pieces that are extremely important to us. And that's why we've had a lot of social emotional learning happening in the first couple of weeks. We're trying to set the foundation for high-quality instruction. But what's really important to note is that we've had to have a lot of time spent thinking about flexibility and adaptability, as well as health and safety. And I'll show you in just a second, just exactly how flexible and adaptable we've had to be as a system. So I think it was, I think it was July 27th, when we first presented to the board about our phased reopening plan. And then on August 21st is when Public Health issued the emergency order number nine. And so that gave us firm metrics for a school reopening at different grade levels. And it also made three to 12 a mandatory virtual start. It also, and this is important to note, originally, our phased restart was for 4K through grade four. We were planning on bringing in for small groups, but with the emergency order number nine, that was made into 4K through grade two, because those, that's what was allowed, because the metric was met for K through two on August 18th. So right away, as soon as that emergency order was issued, we knew K-2 was allowable. And then we moved to August 31st, because that's when we learned that we had the ability to offer the free meal waiver extension. It was an extension from what we were doing in the spring, and it's going through December of 2020, or hopefully not earlier than that, but it is dependent on funding. And this really changed, and it made, it required significant shifts in food service, because they, in a matter of a week, ramped up their ability to be, and to the point where they were able to serve 3,700 meals, serve and deliver 3,700 meals in Week One. And then on September 2nd, we received the emergency order number nine amendment, which allows in-person instruction for students with disabilities and/or an IEP who do the unique needs, requires some component of in-person instruction. So you can see, these, these changes continue to roll, and we have to be flexible and adaptable to roll with them. And then on September 10th, so last week Thursday, later in the evening, is when the Wisconsin Supreme Court put together the temporary injunction on, related to public health and medicine, Dane County's ability or authority to close schools. Their judgment, the injunction was on that. It wasn't on the metrics that they were using. And it did not change any information coming from public health. It just made it so that it was no longer in order. However, in a meeting the next day with public health, they stressed that it was just as important to, to follow the guidance as it had ever been. It just simply wasn't at that point in time an enforceable order. So I've spoken about these metrics, so I want to give you a little bit of information on what these metrics are about. For kindergarten through grade two, and notice it doesn't say 4K, because 4K is connected to the daycare metrics. However, Ms. Amalong, the 4K principal, has been working to align 4K with the kindergarten through grade two. So we have approached it somewhat differently. But the target metric, according to Public Health, was a 14-day average of 54 cases per day or less, and Dane County sustained for over four consecutive weeks. And the source for that information, because there were a lot of questions from districts and, and from parents related to where does this, where did this information come from? So in general, in my conversations with Public Health, they said that to inform the establishment of these metrics and to inform their guidance, that they leaned on reports from other parts of the country, similar school reopening reports from Minnesota, Massachusetts, Michigan, et cetera, in addition to, of course, CDC guidance. But they leaned very heavily on the kindergarten through grade two metric on three different pieces. Harvard's School of Public Health, their path to zero in school, and schools achieving pandemic resilient teaching and learning spaces. So that was one source that contributed to the establishment of the 54 cases per day over for, for 14-day average for four weeks, in addition to COVID local and COVID acmal. So they used three, three pieces of information that they said they leaned on particularly heavily in the establishment of that metric. For grades three through five, oh, and related to that metric, it is considered close to the moderate range in the, in the Harvard's guide, that is actually linked on the Public Health website, so it's very accessible. For grades three through five, which is 39 cases per day on a 14-day average for four consecutive weeks, that is taken from the DHS activity tracker, and it's connected to the burden related to moderately high. And we have not met that yet, and I'll show you a little bit about where our 14-day averages have been thus far. And then for grade, grade six through 12, the 19 cases on a 14-day average is actually from the DHS activity tracker under the burden of moderate. Now, people are often asking, why are they different? And I think that's a really excellent question. And the way Public Health has described it, and they have the research that they're using to, to make some of these determinations listed at the bottom, just like a bibliography, and that is, right now, research tells us there's limited transmission in younger children, lower susceptibility, and a lower disease severity. Consequently, through that, they said, we are starting by, starting this phasing in portion for our county with our youngest students, and working up from there. Now, I know that there was some discussion related to, I think in one of the letters that was put forward today, related to mortality rates, because for young people, the mortality rates are very low. And that's a, that's a great thing, because the self, health and safety of our students is an absolutely critical factor in all decision-making. But we also know from research that our older students in particular, 11 and above, sometimes it's indicated 12 and above, it depends on the study that you're looking at, tend to transmit the virus as much as adults. Consequently, there's a higher standard of community transmission before we gather them in large groups. And while, and they may not, thank goodness, have a high mortality rate for having COVID, as I spoke with Dr. Tempty from the Orchards Project today, and what he said was, was very concise. He said, most young people sail through it. Not saying it's easy, not saying they're sick, or not sick. He said, but some don't. And I think that's an important thing for us to remember, is that we don't know the long-term effects of the virus on anyone, no matter the age range. And we also know that even if our students aren't necessarily getting extremely sick, thankfully, with the virus, they are potentially taking it home, and they are exposing people who may be more vulnerable than they are. And maybe that's not even the caretakers within their home, but then they may also, the caretaker may then be taking it to somebody who is more vulnerable. So it really is about community transmission and making sure that we're making choices that are responsible for keeping our students safe first and foremost, our staff safe, and also ensuring that we're contributing to declining transmission rates within the community. So then, if you look at, this is a really big piece, because I received a lot of concerned emails from parents this weekend about this piece. It's really important to, to make this point, because if you take a look at the 14-day averages, starting from the beginning of August till now, you'll see that on September 10th, there is a significant jump, right? And of course, those are, 65% of those cases, I believe, are due to the UW campus. And so, you know, of course, many of us, many of the Dane County superintendents were anticipating that there may indeed be an increase in cases after our college students came back to campus. And so we asked back in mid-August, we said, if it goes above 54 on a 14-day average, does that automatically mean that K-2 then must be closed? And so they told us at the time that, no, there are other factors that contribute to it. It's not only that positive case metric. So once this happened, meaning once there was a spike in cases that is continuing, the biggest concern, I think, that we received from parents was, why in the world would you start in-person instruction for K-2? And why would you consider potentially increasing it in October, when cases are actually going up? Well, the response that's here comes from the September 10th blog post from Public Health related to, to K-2 in particular. Or actually, this, this quote might be from the September 3rd, but it was repeated again in the September 10th blog post. So they're making this statement on multiple occasions, and that is that, at this point in time, they do not have plans to recommend that K-2 is no longer in person. Now, that may happen, and they will certainly, as I've stated before, you know, I'm meeting with the representative from Public Health at least twice a week, but that doesn't mean I'm not going on their website every single morning. And I also expect that if they were to make a decision about K-2 no longer being open, they would let us know right away. But as of right now, Public Health is still allowing K-2 instruction. And so a lot of people were very concerned in emails this weekend, that by allowing K-2, or by considering additional K-2 time in October, that we were going against public health recommendations. But I just want to make the case that right now, they're saying that this is still okay. And as you can see from the quote, they're saying that they're considering the number of positive cases in addition to the extensive exposure, contact tracing capacity, and that at this moment, there's little evidence of spillover in other parts of the community. So we will have at least three weeks before we think about, or before we, we have plans, if Public Health allows, to increase K-2 instruction the week of October 5th. That gives us three weeks to have these small group instructional times with our students, where they're only in school for two hours at a time, once a week. They're learning, you know, helping learn, we're helping them to learn how to keep their mask on, to wash their hands, to do the six feet of physical distancing. We're helping them understand all those pieces, so that if Public Health still allows K-2 instruction, we are ready to increase the time. But we won't if we don't have the go-ahead from Public Health. But we really need to plan a few weeks into the future, because there are a lot of logistical pieces connected to an increase in time. And that's also why we asked our- And that's also why we asked our parents of students in grades three through five to indicate, um, if they would like to be in an AM or PM cohort, not because there is a date at this point in time for that. Hopefully, it will be soon, but we don't have a date yet. However, we want to be prepared, so that when we get, um, our numbers of where they need to be, we can start right away. Um, so we're really trying to be prepared. And I think sometimes in our effort to be prepared, we make people concerned that perhaps we're rushing the process. Um, when in fact, the process thankfully has, um, stayed same from the beginning. Another, um, important component to remember is that, um, public health is also asking schools to maintain six feet of distancing, um, to, and to ensure face coverings, and all of those things that, um, as adults, we, we are also doing. And so there's implications for that, in the sense that, um, our physical classrooms, we, we can't have a full classroom of students and maintain six feet of, of physical distancing. So, um, that is one of the reasons that we think it's appropriate for students to be divided into cohorts. Um, it also, um, makes contact tracing, uh, much easier, because we know then, um, who is in the room, and if they're more than six feet apart, um, and they have been able to stay that way, although I'm not sure if with K2, we'll always be able to make them stay that way. But we'll at least know how many kids were in the room, who was sitting nearby, and we have, uh, much more control of that in a smaller group than we would a larger. Now, the teaching staff, um, that's where it gets, uh, complicated, because even when you have enough rooms and you can spread out, let's say, um, elementary students spread out into the high school, for example, um, when the metrics are met, it's still about the number of people that we have to, to do the teaching. So, um, there are a lot of, um, complicated logistics. And that's why when we are able to bring students back, either for more time or for, um, the first time, that we'll probably be bringing them back in, um, a cohort model. If we do it too soon, I think that the concern is, um, we'll see a lot of what's happening in other schools where, um, you know, there are a lot of cases and there are a lot of quarantines, and eventually, um, whole schools, um, are shut down. So we're really hoping in this situation that starting slow does not mean that, you know, means that we'll be able to end up at a, at a good place eventually. So, in order to reassure people that, um, the plan that we have discussed for our K2 students, um, is indeed the plan we originally discussed, we took a screenshot from the presentation that was on, um, posted on July, July 30th. So our plan all along, um, has been to, if public metrics, uh, allow it to happen, to increase, um, in-person instruction for our youngest students, um, October 5th. Once again, it won't happen if, um, public health says it's not safe for us to do. But right now, uh, we still have the thumbs up and we can begin. The things that have shifted since the end of July presentation is, uh, 9/14, um, is when we actually began, um, or excuse me. Sorry, uh, we decided to be, begin, um, instruction on, um, online instruction on September 8th and the small groups on September 14th, as opposed to September 8th. So we gave ourselves just a, a one-week, um, buffer zone there. And then, um, we had to realign our grade bands, because our original plan was for our Oregon phased restart students to, um, start school, have those small group cohorts, um, 4K through grade four. But with, um, the public health, a recommendation, break, breaking it down to, um, K2s and then, um, 35s, we, uh, made an adjustment based on that. Um, another piece that we know has been, um, discussed quite a bit is that there was some confusion that perhaps, um, you know, all of our, our youngest students were, were going online in Oregon online, or we're going, we're phased restart and Oregon line, uh, Oregon Online was going away. And that is absolutely not the case. We're, um, absolutely committed to, to giving families, uh, that choice of being able to be online if they want to. And, uh, we probably don't talk about it as much, because there aren't as many logistical pieces to put together as there are with the phased restart. So, um, for example, today at Prairie View and Netherwood, when our, um, littlest learners were arriving, when I say littlest, I mean really truly kindergarteners, um, were coming to school for, um, physically coming to school for the very first time. Although I was able to, um, witness, um, an adorable interaction when a teacher outside said to a brand-new kindergarten, who was, kindergartner who was just walking away from, um, mom for, for the first time. And the, um, school adult said, welcome to your first day of kindergarten. And she said, this isn't my first day, I started last week. So, um, it was good to hear that they, they thought of their online experience in, in that manner. But when I was watching the kids come in, there were, um, staff members, many thanks to, um, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, there were staff members probably about every 20 feet in a yellow vest, uh, guiding kids along to the next person in a yellow vest, a train of people taking them all the way to the door where they, where they went in. And so just looking at all of the people who had to be outside to ensure that the little ones who were getting dropped off, either by, um, a family, a family vehicle or a bus, how they were making it to the right door in the building and then to their teacher's room while maintaining physical distancing, while being made to feel welcomed and cared for, um, it's a, it's a complicated process full of a lot of logistics. So that's probably why, if you're an Oregon online family, and you're, you know, you think you're hearing a little too much about Oregon phased restart, that's one of the reasons, there are a lot of logistical components. So, um, for phased restart, you'll see that the 4K, we're planning for expanded instruction, beginning in October, unless public health guidance changes, and they tell us that this is not a good idea. Um, the grades three through five teams are planning for in-person instruction. They're getting it ready to go, so that when we meet the metric, we can move full steam ahead. And then, um, we're also looking at all the possibilities for, um, safe in-person instruction for grades six through 12. Because of course, we want, um, our students in grade six through 12 to be able to be in school also. Um, that's what everybody wants. And we know that there's a higher standard until, um, to make that happen, um, at this point. And we also know that they're, um, much more, um, adept at accessing online learning than a five, six, or seven-year-old is. So, um, that is one of the many reasons why our students are tiered by grade bands. So we're definitely watching what's happening in other areas, um, for good and for bad, because we know that there are other people who, other schools who have opened and who are currently struggling. And we also know that there are schools who have opened and things are going well. So we want to be able to, to learn, um, from all of that. And as I, I mentioned previously, um, I had a very nice phone conversation with Dr. Tempty from The Orchards Project. And, um, Dr. Tempty is also on the chancellor's team of experts that meets with, um, university chancellor, um, on a daily basis. And thankfully, he's a well-known Oregon resident who through The Orchards Project, um, is known to many of us because of his specialty on influenza, um, on the spread of influenza. So he and I had a good, uh, conversation today, where we talked about the public health metrics, and we talked about, um, our phased plan. And, um, in particular, our, our K2 plan right now, because we know there's a lot of families who are concerned that we are rushing it. And, um, Dr. Tempty gave me permission to, um, quote him as stating that, um, he sees our plan right now as being sound and reasonable. And, um, he spoke about, um, always remembering that there is, um, never an elimination of risk. And we all know that. We're not going to be able to make it so that there's absolutely no risk in our schools for any of the, any, anything that happens that simply isn't possible. But it's about the minimization of risk. And he reminded me that anytime you're bringing individuals together, you're increasing the likelihood of transmission. Um, however, in, um, our discussion related to our plan, as I stated previously, he did refer to, um, it as sound and reasonable. And he also reminded me that there is no one right way to do this. And that, um, very good, thoughtful, well-intentioned people can have very different ideas on how to go about keeping our students safe. So, as I mentioned previously, our next phases, um, will be about, uh, Jack, uh, Jackie Amlong, will talk to our, give information to our 4K parents regarding what's coming for them, should public health metrics allow. Our kindergarten through grade two, um, we're talking about half-days. Uh, 10, 7:50 to 10:30, and then 12:10 to 2:50. And we hope, and that's for four days a week, and we hope to be able to start that October 5th, but as I said, it's all dependent on how the next few weeks go and the guidance we get from public health. Uh, and we won't do it if we, uh, don't have the, the support of public health. Uh, we chose half-days, and I know that was something that some people said, what? You know, I thought you were th- thinking about all-day cohorts. Well, I want to make sure you know, um, the process that we use to, to come to this conclusion. First, as always, you, you look at what neighbors are doing, because we always try to learn from one another. And that's an approach used, um, in a couple of our other districts who started, or Dane County districts, who started K2 instruction earlier than we did. Um, but you, you learn from that, but you don't necessarily do the same thing. Um, although I have to say, Dane County districts overall are, um, quite united on, um, adhering to, uh, public health. However, um, in addition to, to looking at what others are doing, we also listed the options, and we had what we are referring to as a, um, a super-leadership team. Meaning that there are representatives from grades K through two from every one of the schools that offers those grades, coming together with principals to examine the possibilities, because in this situation, we really feel that, um, what will result in the best learning is one of the most important factors that we can, um, consider in deciding how we're going to go about these, um, half, these, uh, sessions of more instructional time for K2. And the teachers who were a part of it felt very strongly that the best educational outcomes were going to come from seeing the children more frequently. That in a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday cohort option, there could potentially be five days in between seeing students, um, or seeing cohorts of students. And so they thought if they were able to see all of their kids four days a week, that's going to lead to better learning. And of course, some, some families had some really excellent questions about that. And one of the first questions was, how are you going to be able to clean the classrooms in between a cohort that ends at 10:30 and a cohort that begins at 12:10? Um, well, one of the things that's important to note is that the classrooms under these, um, restrictions look a little bit different. Um, they don't have all the stuff out that they normally have. Because, um, really, students will have their own materials that they are working with, but there won't be as many things around them, because we, we really can't necessarily clean every game or every book, or everything that we would love to have our students be able to do. And instead, they'll have their own set of math manipulatives and some of their own books in their bins and, and that sort of thing. So we won't have a lot of those extra things to clean. It'll be more about ensuring that high-contact areas, um, are cleaned between sessions in the classroom and on the buses. And, uh, we've been assured that, um, that is an absolutely, uh, that we can do it. That's, uh, not a problem. And so for selecting AM or PM, um, families were allowed to, to put in their preference, and we'll do everything we can to give people their preference, but we also know we have to balance out cohort and class sizes. Um, we want to make sure we're keeping them very small. So right now, the students are in a pod of four to six. And if we increase their instructional time, they would be in a pod of probably, um, eight to 12. So it would increase just a little bit like that. Um, we're also looking at, uh, transportation needs, and we're also trying to make sure that siblings are together and that they're attending the same half-day sessions, because we know that all of this is extremely complicated for families. And we had the excellent suggestion, um, of perhaps trying to, um, put some students who are already together, um, at, um, daycare centers like ASC, Karate America, et cetera. Allow them to, um, come on the same day too. So we're going to try to, to work in, um, all of that so that we can accommodate as, as many suggestions and as many, um, needs as we possibly can. So finally, um, as you know, there are many factors at play, um, as we navigate through the beginning of the school year, uh, while living in a pandemic. And honestly, while living in, um, a county that is listed as, um, a, a high rate of transmission on the DHS Activity Tracker, and then living in a state that's currently increasing, um, in, in numbers, as far as numbers positive. There are a lot of competing factors and a lot of competing di- needs and desires. And, um, it's challenging to, to balance all of that. And that's really why we rely heavily on our, um, guiding principles. What do we know to be ultimately important? And honestly, we, we rely very much, and you see in this, um, world, we rely very much on the community. And even though not everyone agrees on how to go about this, um, because as, you know, Dr. Tempty said, there i- there is no perfect way. We don't all agree about how to go about, um, reopening our schools safely. But I really want to commend the community as a whole for the level of kindness and civility in the communications about the disagreements. I appreciate it, I've learned something from every email that is sent. And, and I take them all very seriously, whether I'm receiving one email about a specific concern or a dozen emails about a specific concern. They're all read, they're all carefully considered. And, um, they all become part of the discussion, because this is something that we're reviewing daily. And that really gets to, um, our last slide. We're 100% committed to creating the best possible plan, and that's experiences for our students and for our families, because we know how much the families are impacted right now. So we plan, we implement, we check on our impact, and we make adjustments. And that is going to be a cycle that we are doing continuously throughout the entire school year. Um, because, you know, I don't think that this is going to be something that's in our rearview mirror anytime soon, but I hope we're able to, as, as, um, one of the parents put it in an email today, uh, learn how to live in our new normal. And I think what I'm hearing from, um, many of the professionals in the field is what that means is, um, learning is making sure there's a lower viral count in the community, um, before we take some of the really important next steps at getting our kids back in. So, um, that is what I know for now. And, um, I will now go to questions that people have for me.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Dr. Bergstrom. Uh, Heather, anything for Dr. Bergstrom, questions or comments?
Yeah, I do have a few questions, thank you so much, um, Dr. Berg, Bergstrom. No doubt, the amount of brain power and energy and time that you've, you and your team have put into this is, is, um, staggering. So thank you. Um, I can't imagine a tougher year, whether you're year one in this role or year 20. Um, okay, I, I might be dense on this, but I guess I'm a little confused on the October 5th date. Is that, are we planning to make the decision October 5th and then have a start date in the future? Or, uh, yeah, it's a little unclear to me when we're do- doing, based in Dane County Public Health, and they're gonna let us know October 5th, how that works.
Well, basically, we're planning to be able to increase, starting the week of October 5th. And we'll know between now and then whether or not that's even possible. But we also-
There's no part, there's no date? To know, like, okay, on September, making this up, 27th, we'll know that it's a go or a no-go?
Well, we'll tell people as soon as we hear.
Right, okay.
No, but as soon as we hear it's not, we'll, we'll alert people, or if it's not, let's hope it, let's hope it is.
Yeah, right, okay. Um, the other question that isn't clear to me is, with the increase to, for K through two, does, for the phased restart, not Oregon Online, does the live teaching then go away, because the teachers are now full-time with students?
Right, um, so we're in the middle of, of figuring that out, but right now, we're leaning toward, um, when the students are physically present in the classroom. Um, emphasizing, um, English, or language arts, reading, writing, um, speaking and listening, and math during that time period. And then having the, um, recorded sessions, the afternoon sessions, potentially with, um, uh, some of those terrific rotations classes, and then maybe, um, science and social studies. But we're playing around with that right now, but we're thinking that, um, the mornings when they're in person, or the afternoons when they're in person, we'll probably focus more on, um, reading, writing, and math.
Okay. And then, um, I feel like a broken record. Okay. And then I feel like a broken record, so forgive me. But is, and obviously, our weather window is closing. But is there any, especially with the larger cohort and this younger age group, thought of moving some, all, any of this outside as it's able to be done?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I think some groups were outside today. And we rented a couple of large tents that are outside. I know there are two outside of Prairie View, I believe, and you can certainly correct me on that.
Right, right.
But yes, that would absolutely be something we will utilize until we can no longer feasibly do it.
Okay. I think I'll stop there. I'll let everybody else have a chance and then I might reserve the right to ask one follow-up question.
You don't have to reserve the right. You'll get it. Anna, you're up. Kevin, then you're on deck. Anna?
Thanks, thanks, Steve. So obviously, really great information. Thank you so much for this update and the hard work that you continue to put towards changing and modifying and revamping all of the planning and moving targets. So it's really tremendous to see the work. I will, I will say that I do support following the guidance and recommendations of public health from the standpoint that they're the experts on infectious disease. And I don't think any school has ever had to develop a reopening plan through a pandemic. There's not a playbook. There's not a best practices guide. And so we're really stuck with following who we designate are the experts in this, and I think in this case, it's public health. So I think we need to lean on those experts and we need to really rely on that expertise. I will say, the school administrative team, certainly, you are the experts on the logistics of how to run a school. So you know the ins and outs of how to get kids in and out of a school and what spaces we have to educate them in. So I think, you know, we're relying on both of those technical experts to bring us to this reopening plan. So I wanted this to go on record saying I do, I do support that approach. With that said, I guess another comment I would have is I do think it's important that we monitor how our other closest neighbors are doing with in-person learning. In particular, obviously, Evansville is our closest neighbor and they are doing in-person learning. I don't know how accessible data is from districts on if they're having cases, if they're having quarantine issues. I don't know if that's public data or if it's available to districts to learn from. But I do think that there's value in looking at communities nearby that are not necessarily following Dane County public health measures, but might be successful with some in-person learning. I do, I do think we should continue to understand that and learn from the experiences of our neighboring districts. I think it might be helpful to look at the potential of sharing that information with Dane County Public Health as well to say, you know, there's, there are districts that are being successful, that are outlying, close neighbors to us, for example. You know, we're kind of on the outskirts of Dane County. We're not as dense. So I think I'm hearing from people that it's difficult to compare our community, our Oregon community, to the greater urban part of Dane County. And so I hear that and I recognize that, and I think there's value in looking at that. Bottom line, I would like to see public health maybe reflect some of that in their guidance because I do, again, support following those experts on the topic. So I guess a question for you would be during those district superintendent meetings that you're participating in weekly or twice a week, if this is a discussion point that comes up about districts outside of the county that are, that are facing this. And then I guess another follow-up would be, does public health of Dane County meet with public health of Rock County, for example? You know, are there meetings that are happening at that higher level with those experts with, across counties? Because I think that's also could play into a revision or a plan or additional guidance coming from Dane County related to any of the experiences happening there. And those are really the comments that I jotted down related to my perspective on all of this at this point in time.
Thank you. And just to give you some information on your question is that a lot of the superintendents and districts that are slightly more outlined, that the fringe of Dane County attend our meetings. So for instance, you know, Lodi attends and Edgerton attends and Cambridge attends and Deerfield. So we have a lot of people who are consistently sharing their plans. And they, you know, they are talking about bumps in the road that they hit or things that are going well. So that is something that we do as a superintendent group on a weekly basis.
Thank you.
Kevin and Troy, you're next.
Just so I'm clear, is this really question time or are we also making comments or reserving that to the end?
No, you can, you can comment now. I'm just going through people once right now.
Okay. So I guess I'll echo what Anna and Heather said. Obviously, a lot of planning's gone in. I know you've wanted, we all have the common goal of getting kids back to school, right? I think what it really comes down to from my perspective is the metrics being used. I mean, from my, from where I'm sitting, I think it's pretty unlikely we're going to get kids back to school if we're only going to use Dane County's mandate as our guide. It's obviously restrictive. I mean, as many examples as we can pull up of school districts or individual schools that have not maybe done well in the first couple of weeks, and it is early, I do understand that. Certainly, examples, again, in early stages can be found where, you know, where they have a successful start with really going back, you know, full-time with masks, with social distancing, et cetera, within the constraints, constraints that they have. A couple of questions, Leslie, to start. So what flexibility do we have in general to make decisions outside of PHMDC's advice?
Well, I think that that...
As a school district, as...
Comes a decision-making point, I think, for every school district. If it, if the Supreme Court in their final decision says that public health doesn't have the legal authority to create an order, then it becomes a district's decision for everybody in Dane County.
Right. But the individual schools could decide to go a slightly different direction, even though you're within Dane County?
School districts could, yes.
Okay. That's what I figured. I just wanted to verify that. I'm going to jump to a really specific question. So we prepared for K through 4 going back to school. And at the last minute with emergency order nine, we obviously had to go back to K-2. As initial step, what's preventing us from actually executing on the plan that was worked on so hard all, you know, all summer leading up to school starting?
It really is just leaning in on the, on the advice that, well, it started as an order and became advice from public health regarding starting with K-2 and then moving to the 3-5 phase. It really comes down to that.
Okay. Look, from my perspective, I understand why we have to take this seriously, right? It's a very difficult situation. We hope to never have to deal with it again once we get our way through, through the whole situation. I mean, what is really important for me is that there's choice for people. I totally respect all the parents and teachers that have situations where they're concerned for their health, health of family members that are at home, or just concerned in general that they have a full virtual option. But I think just as strongly, the parents like myself that feel very much aligned with much of the letters that were read tonight, maybe taking out some of the emotion, but much of the letters that were read tonight, that we're also given a choice to have our kids back in school because our kids are not necessarily learning through virtual. And again, I know it's early, it's two weeks. I can tell it's a lot better than the last year, which we all expect because we had much more time to prepare. But what I'm asking for, what I think is important to give our parents in our school district, is a choice. And those that want to stay virtual, they can stay virtual. I know we have that option for those that opt early in. But the more we can be on the leading edge in Dane County to take calculated, educated risk, the more that I think, you know, you'll have options for people. And I'll be proud of the district if we decide to err on the side of calculated risk, but moving, moving ahead, you know, briskly. I guess the last thing I'd say, and we've talked about in the past, I mean, the long-term impact on some of the kids, I think the issues that we will be seeing and have seen with Equity will only be exasperated with the longer the kids are out of school. I'm hoping that, you know, Dane County, with their metrics, obviously, they've taken some consideration with factoring out the spike from UW, which is not going to be, which is a unique situation, of course, with a different cohort of people that take their responsibility, I guess, differently and are also, when you're talking dorms and that, pretty tightly contained. So there's some of that that's going to happen and we should have all expected that. I'm sure the school, to a certain degree, did expect that. But hopefully, the metrics will reflect, reflect the learnings that other counties, other states, other districts have had the opportunity to learn from in the early stages of this. And we're not paralyzed by some metrics that seem to lose credibility, at least in my eyes. So that's what I have to share.
Thanks, Kevin. Troy, and then Tim, you're next.
Well, I had a whole page of questions, but Dr. Bergstrom, you answered really most of them in your thorough presentation. I did just want to, I guess, back up to the starting point of your presentation where you talked about the attendance in the first week of school. And did I hear you right, that the highest number of students district-wide that were, did not attend was 16?
Yeah, in a whole school. And out of the 16, only 11 of them watched the lesson later. So it's pretty amazing. I mean, I think honestly, the middle school ended up only having three students who didn't attend and they were, for the entire week. And there were really specific reasons for each child. And the numbers at the high school are equally incredible, honestly. It's better than the average year.
Yeah.
When kids are coming in person. So that's, that's a important thing.
Yeah, that's astounding. So no other, no other questions from me. I guess I would just comment that I've been tracking this website. The National Education Association has the website of Wisconsin schools that have had COVID cases within, within the schools. And, you know, there's 61 schools on this list, not necessarily, not necessarily districts. Many of those schools have had to shut down or go to virtual, virtual learning. Not all, but many. And, you know, I would just comment that that's a, that's a very disruptive situation to put our, our students in when we have to react very quickly to go in-person learning to virtual learning. And, you know, there's, there's going to come a day when I think we're going to, we're going to get to that situation where we're going to have to make those decisions. But I guess at this point, and looking at where we are with, with the number of cases in our, in our county, I just, I just feel like we're at a point where we're just, we're not quite ready to do a wholesale, in-person learning for district-wide. And would agree with fellow board members' previous comments that paying on that, relying on the, the health professionals, but, but also kind of looking to the future, as Kevin said, and, and just being open to some other possibilities as we go forward here. Because I do think it's going to be, if we simply rely on, on the health measures that are set out today, it's going to be a while at the current rate. So that's really all that I had.
Tim, and then Krista, you're next.
I really don't have any other questions either. I appreciate the knowing that we are considering how other districts outside of Dane County are doing. Because, you know, I know that there was a questionnaire that went out to the districts across the state, for instance, and some 450 or 460 districts reported in, and 66, almost 67% of those kicked off school in person, only in person. And, you know, some of them are going to, are definitely facing some challenges. Janesville reported today, for instance, that two of their schools, they're going to quarantine two of their schools for 14 days. But they have 19 schools in Janesville. And so 17 of the 19 schools are continuing to at least hit their metrics and keep them open for in-person instruction. I totally agree with Kevin. You know, we have done some amazing things in this district. And things like IEPs, Individual Plans for Kids, and respecting their differences has been a great thing for our district. And I think we need to take that into consideration as we consider, you know, those families and kids who need to or want to be in person. Because I think we have educators who feel the same way. And I think we, we have a good match of families and kids who want to be in person and can choose that as a direction, not just for next week, but for the rest of the semester. And I hope that we take that into consideration. I know that Dane County has lots of metrics going on. They have lots of tracing going on. But I, you know, the further we get out, again, 66% of the districts across the state are in person this week, educating their kids. And I'd like to make sure that we give our families that same choice because we've always been a district that does that. That's it for me.
Krista?
Thanks. You know, I'll echo what other board members have said in terms of the work that's gone into this. And, you know, Leslie is a superintendent in her first year. This is not easy. And I really appreciate you and how you handle this situation and your leadership. I think a couple of things. I think we have to be careful about blanket statements. That school districts are in session, but they're doing different things. And our district is different in terms of size than Evansville or other districts. And I think the important things that Leslie mentioned at the beginning are, we have to consider space. We have to consider teachers. When we look at cohorts, we have to consider cleaning. So those are things that are unique factors to the Oregon School District. And so when we talk about going in person, I also want to make sure that we're clear that this is not pre-COVID in person, that things are going to be the way they've always been. And so it's important that expectations are set to that it's going to be different no matter what kind of school we have for the next three months. And so, you know, Leslie talked about kids being trained to wear masks all day. As parents and as family members, we can also start working with our kids in a positive way about preparing them for what this is going to be. We are school board members, but I'm also a mom. I've got a freshman in high school and I've got a sophomore at UW-Madison. So I'm really clear about what's happening with virtual, what's happening with a kid at college that's pretty much quarantined and what that does to mental health. And so I really appreciate the Oregon School District reaching out to every family in our district, checking in on mental health. I can guarantee you, 66% of the school districts in the state of Wisconsin are not doing that. So we deserve to pat ourselves on the back to being unique and forward-thinking by doing that. And that's a really important thing because that's a lot of what I hear when I talk with people that maybe are happy that we're not in session or not happy, is they're worried about the mental health of their kids. And our district has reached out to every family member. And I also had a meeting for Friends of Oregon School District this week about kids that have not checked in, the 16 kids. And we have staff people that are going to houses and checking on kids. Those are really important things that people need to hear about what our district is doing. Really, really important things. So I appreciate Troy's comment about it's also really disruptive to bring kids in and then to take them back home. So I think we're being prudent in making sure that we're going slow to go fast. And so I just think those are some really important things. The last thing I will say is, if we're being accused of being too safe, I will take that argument every single day as a school board member. That's it for me.
Leslie, a couple of questions. When you've been talking in your sessions with mental health of Dane County-Madison, are they considering breaking out their data? are they considering breaking out their data to take into account the UW-Madison surge?
Well, it's definitely was mentioned as something that they are considering. And I think that they will be holding on making a decision related to that to see the impact of the UW-Madison and the spread beyond the campus. But if the spread beyond the campus is minimal, then they said that that is something that's on consideration, would be pulling out the UW data.
Okay. And you talk with, I think probably weekly with the Dane County Superintendent's. Can you tell us whether or not they're following mental health recommendations? What are they doing?
Public health recommendations, yes. Right now, that, that is what everyone discussed last week, that the Supreme Court injunction made things more difficult, but didn't necessarily change the path forward.
For them right now?
That's correct.
Okay. You know, I just, I want to echo Krista's comment that, you know, you know, we're in Dane County, we're 10 miles from Madison, so that impacts us. And, you know, we, we have our own unique situation. So I don't want to get into considerations that other places around the state are open. That's relevant, you know, it's not determinative. And I think, Leslie, we should continue to look at, you know, how they're doing, you know, the initial signs. I know Rock County is, I've talked with a couple of districts down there and they're really concerned about their metrics and they're leaning on Rock County, Rock County Public Health in terms of making their decisions. So you guys know me over the years as a, if there's been anyone who's pushed projects or action, as I'm usually the one that said, go fast. And we're not going fast enough on stuff. I used to hear that from your predecessor all the time, Leslie. Slow down a little bit. Okay, so I'm usually the one pushing. And I'm going to echo Krista's comment that, you know, we're responsible for 4,000 kids and 600 employees. And we don't take that decision lightly. We're listening to everybody. We appreciate everybody's point of view. And we all have the same goal, that is to bring people back. But we're just learning about this disease. We're learning about its spread. We're learning about its short-term impacts. That is, what is the death rate? What's the mortality rate? Who is it affecting? And we're starting to learn about its long-term effect on people, including our students. And that means not only how sick are they initially, but are there any long-term implications in their health? That is, to their immunology system, to their heart, to their lungs and to their brain? And right now, no one can tell us what those long-term effects are. And so I think our plan to start slowly and to maintain a safe level is the appropriate one with built-in flexibility to modify that as we go, to learn from best practices. But I don't want to get into a situation where we've blown up the district with a spread of this disease and blown up our community like we've seen at the UW and other campuses around the state, not knowing what the long-term effects are on our students and our employees and on our community. And I don't want to have a situation where we keep seesawing back and forth between instructional models. We have planned all summer long for this eventuality, primarily dedicated to let's deliver online at the beginning and see how we can phase off of that. There is no reason to jump off of that at this point in time. Okay? It doesn't mean that we're not committed to moving forward and moving forward as fast as possible, but that will be determined as we go forward. Okay? But for me, it's about, I don't know all the facts. We will learn them and let's be committed to safety and let's do what we're doing right now the best way we can. Okay? And we planned for that all summer. And the anecdotal returns right now is that the instructional level virtually is really very good. You know? And we'll see, you know, the, the proof is going to be in the pudding, you know, we'll, we got to keep monitoring that over the next couple of weeks. We got to keep monitoring the data in terms of health data and the, the spread so that we can move eventually towards reopening. Okay? But that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from. But I'd like to commend the board and to the community for being able to express differing points of view on this. You know, because they're all relevant and, and for the most part, they've all been delivered in a manner that's been kind and caring and recognizing that we're all part of a family in a very difficult situation. And we hope that people understand that we're listening and they're being heard as we move forward. So that's my input. Heather, you said you might have another give back.
Yeah, the only reason I, I wasn't sure if we were questioning or commenting, and I did the questioning. So I just have a very brief comment. And I guess where I'm at is, yes, we need to listen to Dane County Public Health and the numbers matter. I also so badly want school to open, like many other people have said. I also want us to go slow because I already am nervous as a parent that as we expand K through two, if it doesn't work, then we have to go backwards. And I, I think kids are resilient, but it's, I've just seen such a difference this year, speaking as a mom, you know, starting the school year with the expectation that it was going to be online. And yes, you'd have one day a week in school and kids can understand that. It was way different in last spring when we yanked, you know, how we yanked them out. But I think I bred the idea of coming back and saying, okay, now you can go four days and in a few weeks now, you know, maybe two or one. My other comment is, I'd love to go, go to go fast. I just think it's hard to make a decision before we've even had a full week of cohort to react to. So I think that while we're all in a push to do this safely, Dane County aside, I'd like to see how the next week or two weeks go in our own school district, in our own schools, with our own teachers and kids before we can even, you know, say, okay, let's expand. I love the idea of planning to expand. I think that, you know, we need to have that in place. It just makes me nervous that if Dane County said next week, okay, it's a go, that we haven't even figured out our own process before we're now, you know, K through two, making a huge jump and then hopefully, you know, three through five and six through 12 to follow. So that, it's like stepping on the gas and stepping on the brake at the same time. But yeah, that, that was the one thing that made me a little nervous was just before we've done it ourselves to make this pretty big shift. So, thank you.
Leslie, I think kind of one of the common themes that you've heard from the board is that we want to be checking in on a regular basis, you know, on this, monitoring the data, understanding what data is being used. So I'm going to continue to contact board members, you know, if we have to schedule a special meeting just for an update and that sort of stuff, we will, board members. To do that, we're, you know, we have our annual meeting in two weeks for sure. We're going to have a meeting after that. And the number one agenda item for that will be to update all of you in terms of where we're at on the progress because it's not a static plan. We're going to progress through it. So. Okay. That will wrap up that item on the agenda. Annual meeting update, Leslie?
Just that it is next week, excuse me, our next board meeting, not next week. So that would make it the 28th. And that we will be having it at the Commons in the high school so that we can ensure we are all properly spread out.
Great. Superintendent's report.
Well, the fun thing that I have, because I think I've certainly spoken enough. So the only thing that I really, really wanted to add today was that today was the first day that we had our K two students in the buildings. And it was absolutely wonderful to see. And we took some great pictures. And what was interesting about the picture is that you can look at it from two different points of view. When there were just four kids in a classroom spread apart and the teacher was way up at the front, I looked at it and, you know, I felt a little bit sad that, wow, this is, this is what school looks like right now. And that was a little hard for me. But then, one of my colleagues looked at it and said, this looks really safe. I feel so much better just seeing this picture. So I think it's important for us to know that we're all looking at the same picture and coming up sometimes with some very different conclusions, even when, you know, we're, we're all trying to accomplish the same exact thing. But it was a really fun first day to see them and I can't wait for tomorrow to see more of them. And everybody, we opened a new school. And that, in the midst of a pandemic, is oftentimes getting lost. This beautiful new school that our students who were able to visit today are, to actually spend a whole afternoon in. And I was able, Andy and I and Carrie Majewski were able to give some, a tour after our students and staff had left so that some people from the city of Fitchburg saw the school. And one of the things that was really cool is as we were standing there talking about the school forest that is right behind the school, Mom and baby dear just walked right across our viewing and across the hill so that everybody was able to take a look. And it was just lovely to be able to show people this learning space we have for our students, that our students were actually there today makes it even better. So just wanted to make sure everybody remembered, we opened a new school, everybody. And it's pretty awesome. Many thanks to Carrie Majewski and then to Andy, Andy Wyland in Zane Heights for all the work that they did to get all these things going, make it happen.
Thanks, Leslie.
Superintendent's report tonight.
Good. Closing future agenda, well, we've got the annual meeting in, in two weeks and we'll have an agenda on, on opening of school issues and the continuing discussion. And I think we'll probably, again, try to put the closed session on then because we're late again tonight with stuff. So probably bad. I think we're about done with zoomed out. Seeing a lot of head nods with, okay.
About my evaluation, it'd be best if it's probably not 9:30 at night. So that's a good thing for me. I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Okay. So that's the agenda. Anybody have anything else on that? Tim and Kevin and Heather, I'm going to reach out to you about scheduling, you know, for our ad hoc committee so that we can start working on that. I think we got to get going on that because I think we have the closing.
We do. We do. I think the, the week of the 21st.
Okay. So that'll give us time. So I'll reach out to you guys, okay? Check out, I'm going to go through my tile. Heather, you're in my top left. Anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah. Krista, you're next.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things, if you'll indulge me. I usually take this time once in a while to give people an update on Friends of Oregon School District because it's school district related. So I just wanted to update people on a couple of things. Number one is, if people recall last year, Schools of Hope no longer exists in our school district. And so Friends of Oregon School District started a pilot mentor program at RCI last year. And Steve, you were a mentor, Leslie, you were, Tim, you were. So with COVID, it kind of got a little derailed, but we had a meeting and we were starting that back up again. So we are going to be reaching out to the current mentors that we had, as well as a new group of people to start that up to maybe meet virtually or one-on-one with students because we know that's a really important thing and expand that to fourth grade and Forest Edge. So if people are interested in being a mentor, please let me know. And then we'll be kind of contacting people in the community to do that again this year. Second is, we met with John Tanner and Andy about internet access that we do know in our school district, we have students who, especially now with virtual learning, either don't live in an area where they can get a service provider access, they need a MiFi, or they live in an area that does have internet service, but they are not able to afford that provider service. So we have launched Connecting Oregon Kids, which is raising money to get 50 students in our district access to internet because we think that's very important, whether we're in a virtual environment or not. And so our goal was $20,000 by the end of September. And we are already three quarters of the way there from donations from our community, including a $5,000 donation from Oregon Community Bank. So just wanted to thank the community and let people know about those two initiatives that are working in partnership with our school district.
Thanks, Krista. Tim, you?
Nothing additional from me, Steve.
Hey, I'm looking through. Troy, you're over on my left.
Nothing from me tonight.
Kevin, back from Utah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good. Just want to thank all the teachers and administrators for the strong start to the year and we know how challenging it's been. And we know ultimately everyone on this call and everyone in the district has the same goal in mind. So thanks for everything you do.
Anna.
Just a quick story. My kiddos both had orthodontist appointments today during their math class. And so they missed class, but they got home or at the end of the school day by noon, they checked in, they were on the video, they were watching it and getting all the stuff they needed figured out. So they didn't really miss math class. They got to just watch the video and do their math and it worked perfectly. So what a great way for kids to be able to stay connected when they have things like orthodontist or dentist appointments and they don't have to feel like they're left behind. So it was awesome. Thanks.
Yep. And I don't have anything. So that means one more motion for the evening.
I'll move to you, Krista.
Is there a second?
This is Heather, I'll second.
Yeah, roll.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Pinkraps?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, we're adjourned at 9:16. Be safe, everyone. Thanks.